Two twenty-eight.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. If you could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Nunez, would you like to lead us?
Yes, thank you. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, we have an invocation this evening from Stephen Black, the Woodland Bible Church. Good evening.
Should I face you over here?
Yes, please, face us. Thank you.
Let's bow our heads in prayer and, Lord, as we go to prayer, I just want to thank you for being the Creator of all things and loving and caring for those that you have created. We just thank you for the many ways that you show yourself to our world. Paul said, "I exhort that petitions and prayers, requests, thanksgivings be made for all who are in authority, so that we, the people, may lead a peaceful and quiet life in all godliness and dignity." And I thank you for our city's leaders, Lord, who serve this city and especially serve the people of the city. Help them, as they discuss the business of the city, to put others' needs before their own. Help them to have a passion to serve this community. Help them in their discussions to serve the people with a special bent towards the poor and the helpless. And help us to follow the example of Jesus Christ, who said, "I came not to be served, but to serve, and give my life a ransom for many." Give our leaders, especially our mayor, a servant's heart to deal with the needs and the issues and the problems of our blessed city. In your name we pray, oh Lord, amen.
Amen. Thank you. You can please be seated. Mr. Scala, could you please have the roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove, here. Councilmember Nunez?
President.
Councilmember Sennella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, if the council could please come to the front podium, we are going, we're celebrating someone today. Today, we are celebrating Fay. Fay has been serving our city for quite a while. Don't be shy. Come on down, Fay. Fay wrote, now, I have to, I have to tell you, in San Marcos, we have this thing, it's called the Spirit of Service. It's something that people like Fay actually, time and time again, will come and serve our community, all of the wonderful people in our community. Thank you, come on up here, dear. I have this for you. I'm going to read it first, though.
Okay.
But I want to thank you for all of your years of service. And today, I don't know if you know this, but it's our sixtieth birthday. So I'm going to give you my pen, and it's our sixtieth anniversary pen, but I want to give this to you. And so it's special, it's, do you mind if I pin it on you?
No, yes.
Okay. I promise I won't poke you.
I will yell.
Yeah, well, I learned, I learned because I do have kids. If I, if I wasn't careful, they would, they would cry no matter what. So, anyway, the Spirit of Service is something that we really value here in the city. Again, you know, people come time and time again, serving our community selflessly, which we really appreciate. So you exemplify the Spirit of Service. How long have you been serving us? I don't recall. Quite a while. I think it might say in here, I'm gonna look. Eighteen years, over sixty-one hundred eighty-five hours. That's, that's amazing. So the San Marcos City Council does hereby present you with a certificate of recognition for your dedication and voluntary service to our San Marcos Sheriff's Senior Volunteer Patrol, and you have been with the senior patrol for eighteen years, as I mentioned, and donated over sixty-one hundred eighty-five hours of voluntary service. You weren't voluntold, apparently. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, hereby recognize you for your years of service to the San Marcos community, and we wish you well in your retirement. Are you really going to retire?
Yes.
You're gonna do nothing. You're gonna do nothing.
No, no, no.
Yeah, of course not. Anyway, would you like to say a few words?
No.
No? Okay, well, you don't, you don't have to, that's not a requirement. So would you please take a picture with us?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll present this to you, and if you could come right up here, and we will. Sure, absolutely. Oh, see, I didn't even see you had that stuff. Come on, come on down. He's, he's got something else for you.
Okay.
And it looks pretty nifty, the badge.
Hi, my name is John Spiller. I'm the administrator for the Senior Volunteer Patrol, serving the city of San Marcos. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members for their recognition of what we do, and especially for recognizing Fay for her years of service. As the mayor mentioned, almost, almost twenty years of service. She started back in two thousand and four, and over six thousand hours of service to the community. Twenty years of service is a long time, especially if you're not getting paid for it. So, I mean, that's really something nice. And one of the things that the sheriff's department does, for anyone that works over ten years or ten thousand hours upon their retirement, they give them this nice shadow box. So we have this to present to Fay on her retirement. It's the badge that she wore. It's also your name tag and a couple of pins that you have. And we also have a nice certificate signed by Sheriff Martinez, again, thanking you for your service. We thank you so much and hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you get to take a picture with us.
Yeah.
It's kind of mandatory, actually. There you go. Oh, wait, wait, here, let me help you.
Too much swag.
There you go. Yeah, her swag. Okay, very good, dear.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your long year of service.
All right.
Thank you.
You don't want to stay for the whole meeting? I'm just kidding. Okay, that's right. Oh, darn. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Unanimously. Okay, moving on to oral communications. I have one, but that's for one of our public hearings. So we'll move on to public hearings. Item number seven, Ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, fifteen thirty, and Resolution two thousand and twenty-three, ninety-one fifteen, Wireless Telecommunications Facilities, Ordinance Update of Chapter twenty point four-six-five, City Council Policy on Small Wireless Facilities Within the Public Right-of-Way and Associated Notice of Exemption from SEQA Requirements as Recommended by the Planning Commission by a seven-oh vote, case number text amendment nineteen dash zero-zero-zero-two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Sean Del Solar will be providing a presentation. We also have Michael Johnston from Telecom Law Firm, who had, who's assisted staff with drafting of the ordinance and policy document.
Thinking now, before you is a text amendment for, to the zoning ordinance, San Marcos Municipal Code, Chapter twenty point four-six-five, for the regulation of wireless telecommunications facilities, and approval of a new city council policy on small cell wireless facilities within the public rights of way. Small cell wireless facilities are a class of telecommunications infrastructure that are defined by the FCC as being less than twenty-eight cubic feet in volume, with antennas of no more than three cubic feet, and when attached to an existing structure, do not extend the height of more than ten percent or fifty feet, whichever is greater. Some examples of small wireless facilities are, from the left to right, streetlight attachments, attachments to wood utility poles, seen in the center, and to the far right, string-mounted facilities between two utility poles. In two thousand and eighteen, the FCC adopted a declaratory ruling and third report and order known as the Small Cell Order. Subsequent to the adoption of the Small Cell Order, was challenged, in Portland, v. United States, in a case of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. The resulting Small Cell Order restricts fees and other compensation to local governments, requires all set regulations to be reasonable and published in advance, requires new sixty- and ninety-day shot clocks to negotiate access agreements and issue permits for small wireless facilities, and creates new evidentiary presumptions that make it more difficult for local governments to defend themselves in actions, if actions are challenged in court. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, the city council approved a master license agreement that set fees, compensation, and provided a template for access agreements with carriers in conformance with the FCC's Small Cell Order. Tonight's text amendment makes updates to the Wireless Telecommunications Facilities Ordinance to comply with the FCC's Small Cell Order and creates a policy on permitting design construction of small wireless facilities within the public rights of way. Changes to the Wireless Telecommunication Facility Ordinance would update the preferred location list to continue to include a high priority for small wireless facilities within the rights of way, update application requirements to allow digital submittal, add and update definitions to be consistent with the Small Cell Order, and delegate regulation of small cell wireless facilities within the rights of way to the new city council policy. The use of a policy to regulate small wireless facilities is ideal because it provides more nimble response to changes in law, technology, and your local preferences, and because it is ratified by and adopted by the city council, it carries the force of law. The proposed policy would apply, would only apply to small wireless facilities proposed within the rights of way, and establish an application process involving a right-of-way permit and building permit process concurrently, which is consistent with the sixty- and ninety-day shot clocks established by the FCC. A public notice will also be required for all residents within fifty feet of a proposed small wireless facility within the right-of-way. And the policy also includes standardized conditions of approval for all sites. The policy identifies nine location preferences based on road classifications within each zone. For example, the highest preference would be for a small wireless facility to be located on an arterial road in the public institutional industrial business park or commercial zones, while the lowest preference would be for locations on residential streets in residential zones. The policy also established preferences for the type of support structures that small wireless facilities are attached to, with the highest preference being for the replacement of an existing streetlight using the city's telecom pole standard, or a new streetlight location also using the city's telecom pole standard. Lower preferences would be for the use of existing or replacement wood utility poles or new non-replacement poles for small wireless facilities that do not use the city's telecom pole standard. Lastly, the policy also contains design standards that prioritize the use of the city's telecom pole standard for uniform appearance of small wireless facilities citywide among the different carriers, prohibits pole-mounted electric meters, requires the use of stealth concealment and least visible equipment, limits height to no more than five feet above the support structure, requires a uniform color finish for all pole-mounted equipment, requires shielded LED lighting, and prohibits advertising. A public notice about the proposed ordinance, text amendment and policy, was sent to wireless telecommunications stakeholders, posted on the city's website, and published in the Union Tribune. A thirty-day public comment period was conducted from October twenty-fourth to November twenty-third, two thousand and two, twenty-two, and a virtual public workshop was also conducted on November third, two thousand and twenty-two. Public comment letters were submitted by T-Mobile, Crown Castle, and Verizon. These comments were reviewed by staff and legal counsel, and changes have been incorporated into the amendment and the ordinance, excuse me, to the text amendment to the ordinance and the policy that are recommended for approval. Additional comments from Verizon were provided related to expanding equipment dimensions of small wireless facility attachments. Additional changes responsive to these comments are not necessary because the design standards of the policy were developed in collaboration with carriers to be practical, inclusive of several different industry designs of small wireless facilities, and because the policy includes a design exception process to allow increased sizes of pole-mounted equipment up to the limits allowed by the Small Cell Order. The ordinance text amendment and the adoption of the policy are exempt from SEQA in conformance with Section fifteen oh-six-one B-three, known as the common sense rule, in that the adoption of the ordinance and policy would enact changes in land use regulations, adding additional regulations and citing requirements on wireless facilities that would reduce their impacts. And it can be seen with certainty that the adoption will not have a significant effect on the environment because it will allow for the development of any new and expanded wireless telecommunications facilities, or, excuse me, it will not allow for the development of any new expanded wireless telecommunications facilities anywhere other than where they are already allowed under existing federal, state, and local regulations. Individual development applications will also be reviewed under SEQA as they are proposed, and applications for wireless telecommunications facilities are themselves generally exempt to SEQA under a Class Three exemption. As recommended by the Planning Commission, staff recommends the city council approve a notice of exemption introduced for first reading, Ordinance twenty-three, or, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-three, fifteen thirty, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, San Marcos Municipal Code, twenty-four-six-five, regulating wireless telecommunications facilities, and approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-three, nine-one-one-five, a city council policy on small wireless facilities within the public right-of-way. This concludes staff's presentation. Michael Johnson of Telecom Law Firm and myself are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Musgrove?
Yes, I have a question for city attorney. I have a nephew who's a senior specialist technology project management AT&amp;T Construction and Engineering West, specifically working on these type projects, but my understanding, this is simply to bring us into compliance with current federal regulation and not driven by any of the providers? Is that correct?
It-
I want to recuse myself when appropriate.
These would be applicable to all carriers, not simply Verizon. I defer to special counsel if there are any conflict issues, but this is somebody who is not a financial dependent of yours.
Correct.
I don't see conflict issues, frankly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Did we receive any comments from residents?
Uh, no.
And how were, they were notified of this via the website, or how would they know? Because this was quite an issue similar to this a few years ago.
Yeah, with citywide ordinances such as this, the policy is to publish this in the Union Tribune and also post it on the city website. City maintains a list of stakeholders related to wireless communication facilities, and they were also provided notice, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Nope. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes to close the public hearing. I would make a motion to approve the notice of exemption, exemption twenty-two dash zero-four-three, and introduce the first reading of Ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, fifteen thirty, approving a text amendment to the San Marcos Municipal Code, Chapter twenty point four-six-five, implementing requirements of the Federal Communications Commission's Small Cell Order, and approve the resolution to implement a city council policy on small wireless facilities within the public rights of way.
I will second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, I'm sorry, eight. Item number eight is the mitigated negative declaration in D. twenty-two dash zero-zero-eight, Resolution two thousand and twenty-three, ninety-one sixteen, general plan amendment, GPA twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-eight, Ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, fifteen thirty-one, rezone, uh, rezone twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-four, and Resolution two thousand and twenty-three, ninety-one seventeen, multi-family site development plan, MFS, DP twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-two, Santa Fe Flores LP requests for approval of entitlements to develop a fifty-unit apartment building on the northwest corner of Santa Fe Avenue and Los Flores Drive.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. Norm Pedersen, the project manager, will be providing a presentation tonight. Also appear on the dais as Kyreen Chua from our Land Development Division.
Okay.
Thank you. Our item tonight proposes a fifty-unit apartment building for council's consideration. The project applicant is Santa Fe Flores. The applicant requests a general plan amendment, rezone, and multi-family site development plan, and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration as the environmental document for the project. Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed project by a six-to-one vote, and modified four conditions of the MFS DP resolution related to the proposed affordable units, driveway access, and security for the project. Project site is shown in yellow here on the vicinity map. The site is located at the northwest corner of Santa Fe Avenue and Los Flores Drive, north of Highway seventy-eight in the college area community plan area of the city. Here's an aerial photo of the project area showing surrounding land uses. The recently developed industrial park is located directly to the north of the project site, and other industrial uses to the west, including a commercial building, a liquor store, directly to the west. To the east, across Los Flores Drive, is an example of, or is an existing apartment complex called Los Flores Village. To the south, across Santa Fe Avenue, is an existing mobile home park. Further to the north and northwest, taking the Los Flores Bridge or the Sprinter Line, is the Ranch of Santa Elena subdivision with single-family homes. That'd be this area over on the right side of the screen. Here's the project site plan. The project proposes fifty apartment units on the approximately two-acre property, which includes five affordable units. A density bonus is requested as part of the multi-family site development plan entitlement. Under the multi-family site development plan, the project design is reviewed for compliance with the development standards of the zoning ordinance and other regulatory provisions. The project site will include recreational amenities, carports, and open parking, and landscaping throughout the development. In the following presentation by the project applicant's representative, Rick Hiddings, he will provide details regarding the proposed amenities for the project. Here are the architectural elevations for the proposed apartment building. The proposed building consists of a contemporary architecture with a split-level design of three to four stories. The top elevation shows the building facing Los Flores Drive. The bottom elevation faces Santa Fe Avenue. The project applicant will show additional views and will discuss the unit types and sizes in the following presentation. Regarding parking, per the parking ordinance, the proposal requires a total of a hundred and four parking spaces. A hundred and seven spaces will be provided with this project. There will be ninety spaces for tenants, which includes forty-six parking, carport spaces. The carports are shown in orange on the north side of the development, which is shown on the right side of this site plan. The carports are shown in orange on the north side of the development, which is shown on the right side of this site plan. In addition, there will be 17 guest parking spaces. The project will also, will share driveway access with the adjacent liquor store to the west, which will continue to have its 17 parking spaces as shown here in the upper-left corner of the parking lot for the liquor store. Kireen Chua from Land Development Engineering will discuss the shared driveway access later in this presentation. In the following presentation, the project applicant will discuss the details of the EV parking spaces and solar panels for the project. In order to develop the project site with the proposed apartment building, the requested entitlements include a general plan amendment and rezone. The current land use designation and zoning of the project site is light industrial for the northern portion of the property, which is shown in light gray on the map here, and commercial for the southern portion, which is shown as a darker gray. The project proposes to change the land use designation to medium-density residential 2 with a density of 15 to 20 dwelling units per acre, and to the zoning designation of R3-10, which is consistent with the property to the east across Los Flores Drive, which has the existing apartment complex. The map shown here shows commercial directly to the west and light industrials uses to the north and west, and residential uses to the southeast and further northeast. The general plan amendment and rezone would amend the general plan, land use map, and zoning map for the proposed multi-family residential designation. The proposed R310 zone allows for up to 20 dwelling units per acre, which would permit 45 units for the project site. As part of the multi-family site development entitlement, the applicant requests a density bonus to increase the density by 12% to 22.4 dwelling units per acre. Per state law, projects that provide 10% of the units for low-income households are eligible for a 20% density increase. In this case, the applicant only requests a 12% increase. This would add an additional five units for a total of 50 units for the development. Development of the site is limited to a maximum of 50 units per fire department requirements since one driveway, since only one driveway access can be provided for the site. At Planning Commission, Condition B30 of the Multi-Family Site Development Plan Resolution was modified by the commissioners to require the five affordable units to be rent-restricted for a term of 99 years instead of the standard minimum of 55 years per the owner-participation agreement with the city. In addition, the condition was modified to require a mixture of bedroom types for the affordable units. In addition, Condition B26 regarding ADA requirements was modified by the commission to indicate that units requiring accessibility improvements shall include both the market rate and the affordable units. Concessions. Per state law, residential projects with a density bonus can request development standard concessions. In this case, the project is eligible for one concession to deviate from the city's development standards. Per R310 zone, the height limit is 45 feet. The project applicant requests a concession to allow for a height of 55 feet on the south end of the building, which is on the right side of the slide of the architectural elevation, and 48 feet to 63 feet at the midpoint of the building. The extra height is necessary to accommodate the elevator towers and the split-level building design due to the existing terrain of the project site. By stepping the building, this will avoid excessive grading and reduce the number and height of retaining walls that would be needed. Under SEQA, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared by Recon Environmental as the environmental document for the project. The M&amp;D was posted for a 30-day public review, and two comments were received. Responses to those comments are in the final M&amp;D included in your packets. The project's environmental consultant team is available for any questions regarding the SEQA process after the presentations. As part of the environmental review, a focused transportation analysis was prepared. Kireen Chua from Land Development is here to discuss this and, and the shared driveway with the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Norm. For the project's transportation analysis, a total of 300 average daily trips is generated for the proposed 50 apartment units with 24 a.m. peak hour trips and 27 p.m. peak hour trips. This project does not result in any transportation SEQA significant impacts and did not meet the requirements to conduct a vehicle miles traveled analysis per the city's transportation impact analysis guidelines. As part of the project's focused local transportation analysis, the level of service analysis was found to have no significant impacts. The proposed project only has a singular point of access on South Santa Fe Avenue that will be shared with adjacent property at 2966 South Santa Fe Avenue directly to the east. An existing access easement, as shown in dashed yellow line, allows for the shared-use driveway straddled on both properties. At Planning Commission, the adjacent property owner expressed concerns on the project's transportation analysis and that the project's trip generation would impact access to the liquor store parking lot. In response, the project's traffic engineer indicated that industry-standard methods were used in determining the project's trip generation in addition to conducting onsite driveway counts for the liquor store. The traffic engineer concluded that the project's trip generation would not impact access to the liquor store parking lot, and a shared driveway would be adequate to handle both properties. The project's transportation analysis was reviewed by the city's traffic consultant, who confirms the result of the analysis. Based on the neighbors' concerns, the Planning Commission modified Condition B2 of the Multi-Family Site Development Permit Resolution to require a 30-foot-wide shared driveway access to accommodate a wider vehicular ingress and egress to the liquor store parking lot instead of the originally proposed 24-foot-wide shared driveway access. No vehicular access is proposed on Los Flores Drive due to the grade challenges, as it will not meet the city's engineering design standards for a driveway grade. However, a pedestrian bicycle connection to Los Flores Drive will be provided from the project site so future residents can access the surrounding transit and bicycle facilities.
Thank you, Kireen. Because the project proposes to change the land use of the property from industrial-commercial to multi-family residential, fiscal and economic impact studies were prepared to evaluate the benefits and impacts of such a change. In those studies prepared by DTA, the proposed apartment development was compared to an industrial-commercial development under the current zoning. Generally speaking, fiscal impact studies look at city revenues such as taxes, licenses, and permits, and also look at expenditures such as public safety, public works maintenance, and administrative services. The fiscal impact study for the project estimates that the proposed multi-family residential use would result in a recurring fiscal deficit of approximately $2,200 to the city's general fund as compared to a recurring fiscal surplus of approximately $45,700 if the site was developed for industrial-commercial uses. Economic impact studies typically look at how much benefit the development would bring to the area based on economic output such as sales and employment. The economic impact study for the project estimates the recurring economic output to the city would be approximately $846,000 compared to an output of $5.7 million annually if the site was developed as industrial-commercial. The one-time economic outputs resulting from construction of the projects are also indicated in the slide here. The project site has remained vacant under the current light industrial and commercial zones, and is unlikely to be developed with industrial-commercial buildings due to the site's topography and lack of adequate accessibility for those type of uses. Richard Ruiz from DTA is available if there are any specific questions regarding the fiscal and economic studies. A public workshop was conducted last year, which was attended by nine neighbors. In addition, during this project entitlement process, three comment letters were received from neighbors, which are included in your packets. Overall, comments were primarily about traffic, parking, crime, and the proposed shared driveway access. At Planning Commission, three neighbors provided comments regarding the proposal. The first speaker provided a presentation regarding the project to introduce rapid transit opportunities and shared rides for the project residents. A copy of that presentation was included in your review packets. In response, the project is conditioned for a transportation demand management plan, which would propose potential trip reduction measures available to the apartment residences such as transit information, discounted passes, bicycle storage, and a telecommuting office space. Another neighbor spoke of the project proposing too many units and resulting in parking and traffic problems for the area. In response, the proposed zoning and density is consistent with the existing apartment complex to the east on the other side of Los Flores Drive, and the project complies with the parking ordinance and will include a parking management plan. And the traffic study identified no significant impacts as a result of the project. As previously mentioned, the adjacent property owner spoke regarding the shared driveway access resulting in the Planning Commission requiring Condition B2 to be amended to provide the driveway entry to be widened to 30 feet. Lastly, regarding the written comment about crime, the proposal was routed to the Sheriff's Department for review, and the department indicated no concerns regarding the project design. The project does propose a security camera system throughout the development. At Planning Commission, Condition C24 of the Multi-Family Site Development Plan Resolution was modified by the commission to include the requirement for a controlled building access such as door entries having a security code to enter the building. As previously mentioned, Planning Commission recommended approval by a six-to-one vote in favor of the proposed project. As previously discussed through this presentation, here's a summary of the conditions that Planning Commission modified as part of the recommendation, which requires widening of the shared driveway to 30 feet per Condition B2, restricting the five low-income units to a term of 99 years instead of the typical 55 years, and requiring the low-income units to have a mixture of floor plans. Regarding this modification, the project applicant requests that this additional language be removed from Condition B3 per the memo that was added to your review packets. The project applicant will speak further regarding this in his following presentation. Regarding Condition 24, this required the building to have controlled access as per the Planning Commission's recommendation. And lastly, Condition 26, that the minimum number of ADA units as required by the building code include both market rate and affordable units. In summary, the project would add available housing to the cities, including five units dedicated to low-income households. The project is located near public transit, the inland trail system, and near employment opportunities. The project is compatible with surrounding land uses. An industrial-commercial alignment under current zoning would not be feasible given to the topography and access constraints of the site, and the project would generate less traffic than industrial and commercial development. Planning Commission recommended approval to City Council as requested, of the requested entitlements as outlined here. This concludes staff's presentation. Rick Giddings, the project representative for the applicant, now has a presentation regarding the proposal.
Thank you very much, Norm. First, do we have any questions of staff, or would you like to hear the presentation by the applicant first?
I have a question.
Sure, Deputy Mayor.
Norm, can you clarify, have we ever had a project with a 99-year term like this?
I'm not aware of that, having occurred for a previous project.
So everything else is 55 years?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr., oh, sorry.
In your presentation, you mentioned that it was unlikely we would have an applicant for that particular property under the current zoning restrictions. Do we have a history of applications? I don't recall there ever being a proposal for that at all.
I'm not aware of any informational meetings or actual applications for that site.
And when the property behind it developed for industrial, this was looked at as part of that and was left out of that because of the difficulty of including it in that.
This is the property that starts on Bostick and then comes back around?
Right, that's right. It was all part of that same parcel.
This was, I think, bifurcated from that. So in 17 years, I haven't heard of anything either. Yes, Councilmember Stone.
Just a quick question, because I'm new. And similar to what Councilwoman Jenkins asked, have we ever had any precedence with requiring a mixture of available floor plans?
No, we haven't been aware of a similar request in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Giddings.
Can you bring up my presentation, please? Yep, there you go. Go back one, please. There you go. Thanks so much. Mayor Jones, City Council, thank you so much for allowing us time to present our Urban Infill Workforce Housing Project, known as Santa Fe Flores Apartments. The development team is listed here, and they're all here in attendance, ready to answer any questions the council may have. This is an urban infill workforce housing project. Every property around this particular site has been developed. There may be a few of them that are getting close to redevelopment, but at this point, they are all developed. There's 50 total units. We are capped because we have a single access by fire department policy. It's a density bonus application with five affordable units, and of those five affordable units, they will all be at 80% or less of the area median income, which currently sits at $106,900. On the right side of this slide, it depicts the one studio apartment that is within the project. There are 77 total bedrooms within the project. It sits on 2.23 net acres. A total of 107 parking spaces, which slightly exceeds the requirement by the city. And those parking spaces will be assigned to units with parking passes that will need to be displayed on the vehicles. On the right-hand side, you can see the depiction of the 22 one-bedroom, one-bath apartments in the project and the 27 two-bedroom, two-bath units in the project. There are no garages in this project. The comments we received from Ranch of Santa Elena were that the project to the east of us, the affordable housing project, had garages, and unfortunately, apparently many of those are filled up with stuff rather than cars. And when people can't find a parking spot in that project, they drive up north Los Flores Drive and park in Ranch of Santa Elena in front of private homes, even though most of the roads up there are public roads. So we specifically did not put any garages in this project. We'll have 45 covered spaces and 62 uncovered spaces. We'll have 16 EV charging stations, five of which will have Level 2 chargers, and 27 additional stalls will be wired for future electrification. We will also be generating 50 to 70 kilowatt of solar power with panels placed on the roofs of the covered spaces. The next slide is a composite of the total unit mix and the parking required. You can see the average size of the apartments are 728 square feet. And again, we slightly exceed the parking required by the city. This is a very busy slide, but I wanted to put it in because it is a density bonus application. Government Code 65915 through 65918 allows for this. It permits applicants to seek a density bonus in conjunction with setting aside a certain number of units for affordable housing for a period of 55 years. The law further authorizes certain incentives or concessions, depending on which side of the table you're sitting at. And one of those is a reduction of development standards as it relates to building heights, which is the concession that we have asked for. The legislation has been confirmed by California trial courts and California Court of Appeals. I've listed three cases there that were directly related to building height restrictions, Woolmore versus the City of Berkeley, Schreiber versus the City of Los Angeles, and Bankers Hill 150 versus the City of San Diego. The amount of space that exceeds the 45 feet high for your three-story apartments is less than, less than 4% of the total building. This gives you an idea of what we're talking about in terms of the area median. This gives you an idea of what we're talking about in terms of the area median income and what 80% of AMI looks like, 50% of AMI, 30% of AMI. The city, during our negotiations with the city, we were asked, which we agreed to, for one unit at 30% of AMI any size and four units at 80% AMI any size, and we agreed to that. The reason that your staff very clearly put is the south Santa Fe side of the building and the center side of the building needs to be higher than your 45 feet, in part so we can connect the third floor of the south side of the building to the first floor of the north side of the building. We are following the topography up the hill. Again, this is a view if you're driving up north Los Flores Drive. This is what the building would look like. It is an urban infill site, and we have literally a bus stop right in front of the building on the north side of South Santa Fe and one immediately on the other side of South Santa Fe, so you can access Route 305 from North County Transit District, which is the Oceanside to Escondido route. I think it's the busiest route along the line because it stops at both Palomar College Transit Station as well as provides access over to CSU San Marcos. If you walk around the corner and go up Rancho Santa Fe from the apartment project, you find a bus stop for Route 304, which will take you down Rancho Santa Fe all the way to Encinitas in the event you're going to take transit. We had, in addition, just north of this project, there is an immediate access to the inland rail trail. If you want to hoof it up north Los Flores Drive, which is quite a steep walk, you can come right down to the inland rail trail and go east or west either way. We had a nice conversation and meeting with Mr. Mendoza, who did put some information in your packet regarding how to incentivize our future tenants to use North County Transit District with either subsidized or free North County Transit passes. We will undoubtedly do that. We talked about car sharing a little bit, but I'm not sure the project is big enough to really do that except through a private firm. I am told there are two firms in California that have a PUC application and have begun giving rides, car-sharing rides, and they show up driverless car, and you're supposed to get in that car and go somewhere. I'm not sure I'd be doing that, but there are companies that have permits in California to do that. The highest building point is at least 23 feet below the nearest single-family resident home on Villa Aventa, so no views will be impacted or blocked. The Planning Commission was very concerned about security, rightly so. So, during construction, we'll have multiple mounted cameras with vocal voice response by monitors. During the leasing up and when we're operating the facility, we'll have access to all building entrances by key fobs only. Once the buildings are up, we'll have multiple mounted cameras at key locations within the site plan. As I said before, vehicles assigned, numbered parking spaces will have a sticker located on visible locations on the vehicle. The entire site is fire-sprinkled and is approved by both the fire department and the sheriff's office. Here's another picture of the site plan that shows the single access coming from South Santa Fe Avenue and looping up the hill following the topography to get to the parking on the north side. There's a right-in-and-right-out-only from South Santa Fe with this joint access. We have no access to Los Flores Drive, but we did look at it extensively when we first started the design of this. It actually was achievable, but we really did not think that the site distance, the sightline when you came out or went in off of Los Flores was really as safe as we would want it. I have watched some people come bombing down north Los Flores Drive from Rancho Santalina, and I would not want to be coming out of this project as those people are coming down. This project, as the staff mentioned to you, has no real traffic impacts of significance. This next slide gives you an idea of the existing traffic volumes on the left from the existing access point serving gourmet liquor. The center depiction shows the project traffic volumes, and then, when you add those up, you can see the total existing plus traffic volumes during the 7:00 to 9:00 AM peak and the 4:00 to 6:00 PM peak, minimal traffic issues. Another depiction of the site plan shows that the project site is 23 feet to 38 feet lower vertically than the nearest single-family residence on Villa Aventa, and the project site is a minimum of 380 feet horizontally from the single-family residences on Villa Aventa, so they will be looking over the project as they do the industrial buildings to the north. This is a visual of what the building will look like once constructed from South Santa Fe. The building actually sits back from South Santa Fe over 100 feet because that's the 55-foot area right there, and we did not want the building to be looming over South Santa Fe, so it sits 100 feet back, which also provides for parking in the front, which I believe assists the concern that Mr. Aboudi has from gourmet liquor in terms of impacting his business traffic. The other issue is the affordable project to the east. As you can see from this slide, it sits about 10 to 15 feet higher than this project's base elevation, so it actually blocks quite a bit of the building visually, and north Los Flores going up the hill also blocks a big part of the building when you're going east-west on South Santa Fe. We'll have a landscape plan, of course, aesthetically pleasing, drought-resistant. It has a nice green space area in the center, just to the west of the building. We think the landscaping will enhance the entrance to Rancho Santalina, and we also believe it'll enhance and beautify the frontage along South Santa Fe. That little green belt will allow a large totlot for young children as well as a rooftop area for adults who desire to work out. And in the ground floor of the building closest to South Santa Fe, there is a significant amount of lockable bike storage and lockable personal storage available for the residents. This project has undergone its required California Environmental Quality Act review. The city hired a qualified third-party consultant, RECON, to prepare an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration, as well as additional technical studies required by the city. Those additional technical studies were an air quality report, an archaeological survey report, a biological resources survey, a noise and vibration technical report because we sit fairly close to the Sprinter line, and a detailed traffic analysis. The MND has undergone the required public review period, and the few comments that were received were responded to by RECON, the city, and the applicant. Prior to getting to any questions, if I might address the four conditions that the Planning Commission added at the commission. They were discussed after the public hearing was closed, and after those conditions were outlined, the associate from Ms. Peak's office suggested very tactfully that perhaps they would want to discuss those conditions with the applicant. Unfortunately, the commission never reopened the public hearing, nor asked the applicant to respond to these new additional conditions that I believe were as much a surprise to staff as they were to us. I thought about running up to the podium screaming, "Stop the madness, stop the madness," but I decided that might not assist us with the Planning Commission. After reviewing the four additional conditions, Condition B-2, C-24, and C-26 are certainly acceptable to the applicant, and we have already provided the staff with a redesign of the shared access driveway per the B-2 condition. Unfortunately, we cannot accept the B-30 condition as it makes the project financially infeasible unless the city wants to provide a public subsidy of between $3.5 to $4 million, which I'm sure Mr. Griffin does not want to provide this project. The applicant has already negotiated or had already negotiated an agreement with appropriate city staff for the five affordable units. One would be at 30% AMI, which is extremely low-income, any-size unit. Four would be at 80% of AMI, which is low-income and could be of any-size unit. All would remain affordable for 55 years. Norm or Joe, I think, answered that question. I am not aware of any project that has been conditioned for more than 55 years, to the best of my knowledge, in the city. So, we would ask the council to either eliminate the last two sentences as currently drafted in Condition B-30 on Resolution 2023-9117, or amend it to state such rental restrictions of the five dedicated affordable housing units shall be in keeping with the agreement between the applicant and the city, which was memorialized on July 6, 2022, which allowed one unit at 30% of AMI any size, four units at 80% of AMI any size for a period of 55 years. We appreciate your time and attention. We will be glad to answer any questions the council may have, and if we may reserve a few minutes at the end to respond to any questions the public has, we would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Does the council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Basgriff.
Thank you, Rick, for coming in. When you say "any size," are we talking about the discretion of property management or the discretion of the applicant?
Discretion of the applicant.
So, when you say "any size," if somebody comes in with a 30% qualification, but they need a larger unit, then that would be the one they would get at 30%?
Not necessarily.
If it's available?
It's available, but our perspective is, and the agreement we understood we had with the city, was that we would decide that the applicant and/or the owner of the building would decide which ones are affordable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Totlot, I know it's quite steep going up, but is there going to be any fencing around that?
Yes, there is, actually. The plan has a very detailed fencing plan around the totlot.
Okay, good. We don't want the munchkins getting out on that road.
Right.
It's a busy road. Okay, and then on the parking enforcement, I would imagine that the management would be handling all of that to make sure. I mean, I always worry about parking in the outlying areas that are outside of the community. That will be enforced by the management?
Yes, and we will have signs posted that if you're not in your proper spaces and you don't show the proper decals, then we'll tow the vehicles.
Okay, and then I did see something, and now I can't find it, about the spaces, the electric spaces?
Correct.
Now, there is going to be, shoot, I hope I can find it real quick, some are going to be pre-plumbed and wired, but then there are going to be some that are actually built out. Was it 16? I want to say--
16 EV charging stations--
Yeah.
--of five, of which will be Level 2 chargers.
Correct, yeah.
And 27 additional stalls will be plumbed and wired for future electrification.
So, and those are going to be the actual stalls or where they'd be the carports or you don't really know yet?
We probably don't really know yet.
Yeah.
And one of the things we want to make sure is, as we lease up, of course, we'll ask the tenants, "Do you have an electric vehicle?" The first tenants that show up will get priority for electric vehicle stations if they have one.
Yeah, okay, all right. That's all I have for now. Any other questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Just a couple. On page 16, you talked about the private storage--
Yes.
--for each unit. Where is that going to be located? In the carport area or where?
If you look at the building here to the far left, you see the first floor of apartments. Underneath that, there is quite an extensive area for personal lockable storage for each tenant and bike storage.
Okay, and is that free to the tenants?
That's our plan at this point, yes.
Okay, okay. And then, let's see, you answered about the bike. And I think I heard you say the city is not providing any funds for this at all. Have you received any subsidy from anybody?
No.
Totally developer--
Totally developer-driven, which I believe was actually in the best interest of the city.
Okay. I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We do have a public speaker on this item, so, all right, thank you, Mr. Giddings.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have Chanel Aboudi, Rancho Gourmet Liquor.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here on behalf of Gourmet Liquor, representing my dad, Faisal Aboudi, who's owned Gourmet Liquor for 29-plus years in the city of San Marcos. His biggest concern, so has ours and our families', is the shared driveway access. I know that the last time we were here on February 6, they moved it from 24 feet to 30 feet. I just don't feel like realistically that's going to be able to avoid all the traffic collisions. When it comes to my dad, he does have bi-weekly deliveries for his store, and they're big semi-trucks. How is that going to impact the people that are trying to come in and out of their apartment buildings? I mean, myself, as a mom, I have to go to the grocery store sometimes two, three times a week, different times of the day, so based off of the traffic evaluations that they had given us, I don't think it's going to be the reality of what the impact is going to be on traffic, the actuality of what's going to happen with impact and whatnot. What my dad fears is that it's going to just cause a lot of collision, more stress for the city, more stress for insurance companies, because everyone's going to be wanting to sue somebody for the way that this project has been placed. I just want you guys to look at the bigger picture, long-term, besides what we have, in fact, right now, and really take a look at the space, how traffic will be coming in and out, how both people who are prospecting, going into the liquor store, and people who are going into their homes, how that's going to impact the shared drive access. That's really all I have to say right now. I did want to make a comment about the space, though. There was a company who, we will rename anonymous, actually bought a partial of my dad's store, was .33 acres of land, back in 2015. They did try to develop residential areas as well. I believe it was, the project was shut down just because of the parking and whatnot. I'm not sure if you guys were aware of that or what. I can send you guys emails on that, but I think the reason why it was shut down as residential was because of the shared driveway access. That property was light industrial-commercial, I think, back in like 1973, and it's been abandoned since then. So, to make it to residential does also impact where the current zoning right now for it. So, I just want to make that clear of what's been happening to us. Obviously, we can't compete with big-time developers. We are small business owners here in San Marcos, but we just want to make our voice heard about how it's going to impact business-wise, traffic-wise, customer-wise, and just the city in general, just to make you guys all aware, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Any other discussion on this item? I like the fact that there are going to be five date-restricted affordable units.
I do have--
Yeah.
I'm sorry. One quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we're widening the original plan from 24 to 30 feet? That additional width, is that encroaching into whose property?
The additional width would be provided on the developer's property.
So, there's no impact to the property line as far as Mr. Aboudi's property?
Correct. The existing property line would remain.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I'm wondering if we could maybe bring up the traffic consultant to talk about the Maybe you could give us your perspective on that.
Sure. My name is John Borman. I'm a principal with Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan. We're a local traffic engineering firm that did a lot of traffic studies throughout San Diego. I guess I'll start with, I do a lot of these type of public hearings, community meetings, and I understand people don't quite understand traffic and fear the worst, and so I understand the questions that came up with Planning Commission and are coming up now. I will say that this project will add a car about every two minutes. So, imagine a car coming by through the driveway, and then it's two more minutes before another car comes. So, it is a very small trip generation in my world. So it is a very small trip generation in my world. Thirty feet's a very standard driveway. That's very common. It's the most common width of a driveway. Most of the projects I work on that will have traffic that's maybe five times what this will be, and a thirty-foot driveway handles it just fine. So I'm very confident, again, I understand the questions from folks, the laypeople, seeing how big the buildings are and how much traffic it might be, but I'm very confident this will work just fine. We did computer analysis, and it's level service B, and good operations.
And this is a ride-in, ride-out?
Correct.
So they're not going to be going across, I'm not even sure you can there.
Correct.
They're not going to be going across. So they're not going to be competing with the traffic on the other side?
Good point, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Yep, go ahead, councilmember.
Thank you. The existing entryway into the liquor store, will that allow a semi-truck or a delivery truck to make the turn without having to back up and do a three-point turn to get in there? And if not, is there any enhancements to that entryway plan?
Yeah, the thirty-foot driveway, it'll allow that.
It will allow that?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you.
Well, I would imagine also that they're already doing it, right? And it's more narrow, aren't the?
Yeah, but I don't know, having not seen it myself.
Yeah, right.
I don't know if they're doing a three-point turn to get in there already, so.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what they're doing today, but yeah, it'll be better than it is today.
And I don't know if a three-point turn's the right way for a semi-truck or?
If it were me, it'd be a twenty-five-point turn. Easily, okay. Any other questions of the consultant? No? Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions, discussion, thoughts?
I do agree with the having, putting this back on the fifty-five-year term instead of the ninety-nine.
I would like to know, Norm, if any justification was offered for the increase from fifty-five to ninety-nine? Or was it just an opinion of one or more of the planning commissioners? Or Joe, thank you.
It's, councilmember, it was an opinion of one of the council members who wanted the affordability restriction to be, I think what they indicated, they wanted it to stay in perpetuity on the property, so that's why they increased it from fifty-five to ninety-nine.
Well, yeah, yes, please.
I want to comment as well, but can we, I'd like to move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, second that.
I'm sorry, I'm just questioning, do we need to leave it open in case we need to call anybody back or no?
We could open it back up.
Okay.
Yeah, we could open it back up if need be. Yes, I'm sorry?
We'll have to remember.
I will remember. Don't have, you have faith in me, don't you? Anyway, okay, so we have motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Okay, yes, councilmember, Chanel.
Yeah, with regards to the two outstanding items here, the disagreement, if you will, between the planning commission and the applicant, I, you know, kind of talking to a planning commissioner and also kind of going back and watching the video of that meeting, I think their intentions were good.
Yeah.
However, you know, I'm a little reluctant to go ahead and put these conditions on a specific project without having kind of a greater conversation as a council and as a community and a city. And so I think I would rather leave the original conditions that were agreed upon between staff and the applicant for this one. However, I would recommend that we have a larger conversation at a later date about how we may set a new standard, if we so choose to, for future development.
Well, the fact that in seventeen years that I've been on the council, we've never actually implemented anything more than fifty-five years. Like, I think it would set a very dangerous precedent moving forward if we didn't have that conversation and we started with one project and made a change during that project, so I would agree with that.
Yeah, that's my concern. I don't, I'm afraid that if we don't have some level of standardization, which we have right now, that standard is fifty-five years, we're going to have ninety-nine for this project, seventy-four for a future project, fifty-two, whatever it might be. And I'd rather either leave it with the current standard or have that conversation. I think affordable housing, you know, the housing situation and affordability issues that not only our community, but all of Southern California is facing, it's important to look at these items, but I don't know if we need to look at it for one specific development. I think I would rather, much rather, take it as kind of, you know, if we're going to have a new standard, let's have a conversation about it.
Well, and then the point, too, also, as the applicant had stated, it also requires a subsidy that I can tell you we don't have.
Yep.
And, you know, to, I mean, to have five families that actually have an opportunity to live in a nice, safe home versus, you know, essentially probably stopping the project completely altogether with such a restriction, I just, I don't think it makes sense. I personally, I mean, in this time, with all of the need of housing and, you know, the homeless population growing and all of that, I would prefer, honestly, to move forward by modifying that condition to the original condition. Was yours a motion?
It can be. I don't know if that was enough, and I don't know if there's more.
Do you have any other?
Discussion here, but.
I would like to add, I'm certainly in favor of revering or agreeing to the fifty-five, because I do agree that if we are going to change that, it should be a policy of this council. But I would certainly be in favor of having a conversation in having it within a broader context of maybe this is one of the items that we consider as a council in terms of ways of bringing in resources to increase our housing ability, availability, and maybe increasing some of the resources, or what would those parameters look like? And when would we add the subsidy? So I would definitely be in favor of a broader conversation that may include this consideration.
Okay, so before we get too far in the weeds and Mrs. Peak tells us that we're trying to make a new policy decision up here, any other discussion?
So what we're talking about is changing to the fifty-five years. And then the other item, which was regarding the five units back to the agreement with the staff, do we need anything specific about that?
Do we need to read into the recommendation plan?
Well, I was getting ready to do that.
I can do that, Mayor.
Well, so, it's several things. It's much more than that. So it would be to adopt the mitigated negative deck, ND twenty-two dash zero, zero, eight, to approve the Resolution Twenty Twenty-three with its original condition of B thirty on page sixteen, which strikes the last part, which starts at such rental restrictions for the five-year dedicated low-income units shall be effective for a term of ninety-nine years. In addition, the dedicated units shall include a mixture of available floor plan types, i.e., for example, studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom. So just strike that entire, that entire line, so that it would be available to whatever the developer ends up deciding at that point in time. And then it would still be the five units, but not that it's ninety-nine years, it would be the standard fifty-five years, which has been what we have always required in the past and already have had that discussion with the developer as well. Then it would also be to approve the Ordinance Twenty Twenty-three, fifteen, thirty-one, Rezone Twenty-One dash zero, zero, four for residential classification of one-point-four-seven acres of light industrial and point-eight-zero acres of commercial zone to multifamily residential, R-three-ten zone. And then also approve the Resolution Twenty Twenty-three, ninety-one, seventeen, Multifamily Site Development Plan, MFSDP twenty-one dash zero, 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 two, to allow the construction of a fifty-unit apartment development utilizing the state's California density bonus provisions in the multifamily residential R-three-ten zone. So that would be my motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I just, before we vote, I just want to specify for the record that I have met with the applicant.
Oh, yes, yes, as have I.
As well.
I did as well, too. And I also want to say for the record that I really like this project. I think this is a great project. I think it's very creative. I really like what the applicant is proposing to do in such a challenging site. I like the location, and I like, I really particularly like that we're including the five low-income affordable units. So I think that really says a lot about how they want to contribute to our city and to our residents. So I really like this project.
Great, well, then let's vote. Are you all ready? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor, could I make a comment?
Oh, I'm still sorry.
What I intend to do is let the planning commission know what the decision was, and also that this council's view is to stay with the fifty-five years in case another project. And the council may have a discussion at some point about a policy change, but to at least let the planning commission know for future projects where the council's viewpoint is on this matter.
That would be good. And one other comment that I would like to make, I do believe that the intentions were good intentions, for sure. I just think that maybe some information on the understanding of what that actually means to a project, it doesn't, it's not a free, it's not a free sort of thing. There is a dollar amount attached to it, which is pretty difficult, you know, whereas we definitely want to have, you know, a ninety-nine year in a perfect world would be a great opportunity. However, there is a dollar amount associated with that, and I think just making sure that they understand that would be good moving forward. Okay.
If I could just make one more comment. Jack, maybe at some point in the future, not right away or anything, you could get back to us at what it would look like if we agreed to the ninety-nine-year term in the future, because in my simplified mind, I think that might make projects not affordable to ever be built here.
I think it's a very complicated, it takes a very complicated financing scheme to get affordable building, makes it more difficult, for sure.
Right, okay.
Well, I think, too, if we had a redevelopment agency, that would be a difficult, you know, that'd be a different conversation if we still had an active redevelopment agency. But in two thousand twelve, when the state ended them, I think it really tied our hands and made it infeasible, as the applicant had mentioned. So, okay, all right, moving forward to oral communications. We have one communication, and then we are going to recognize someone that's going to be leaving. Did he already leave? No, where's our captain? Is he back there?
He's hiding.
Is he hiding, pretending that he's not? Oh, there he is. Okay, so we have one public speaker, and then we're going to call you down, Captain, so you might just be ready in the wings. We're going to put you on the spot, and we're going to require, you know, a cartwheel down here since you're going to be leaving. I'm kidding, just kidding. I'm teasing. I'm going to call you down in just one minute, so don't go anywhere. Don't go have cake.
He will be here on March fourteenth, yes.
Oh, he is? Okay, well, then we will recognize you then, and then maybe we'll be able to have cake. All right, thank you. Okay, Young Park is here this evening. Come on down to speak regarding the property penalty for parents of property, two-two-five, two-three-five, two-four-five, North Rancho Santa Fe Road. Hello, Mrs. Park.
Evening, everybody. Okay, I am the owner of Young Ju Park. I own the property since nineteen-eighty-nine. Excuse me. Anyhow. Excuse me. I think I'm the.
I'll get you some water, Mrs. Park. It's okay, no problem, just wait, we'll pause, we'll pause your timer and get you some water. There's nothing worse than having a dry throat and then trying to speak.
I was, you know.
It's okay.
Quiet.
It's okay, no problem.
You know, we are the.
Gotcha, we've got a cup of water for you. Thank you, Jack. Our city manager is also a public servant like we are. Thank you, Jack. Are we next?
Thank you very much, okay. Anyhow, my voice is a little cold, so maybe she don't understand, and maybe I speak broken English all right, too. But anyhow, I am the, we are the one in the most impact economical, you know, issues, I mean, the society and here, you know? You know, the, by the homeless people, you know, they may, you know, damaged the property, too. Anyhow, city issues said right now, they asked me to demolish the building, so we demolished it. We hired a company, R and R. We told them, we, we, agreement say that comply as a city ordinance till finish the city ordinance. They didn't do it. I called them many times, they don't, and the city let go. I didn't say leave it like that, but right now, we're trying to build the buildings, and three buildings, like two-two-five, two-thirty-five, two-forty-five. So be patient with it, and for the safety wise, we're going to hire the, I'm going to put the lighting, solar lighting, and parking light lighting. This is my ally, and working together. And it's going to be project together in the property. His name is Mark Pasamenta. Okay, anyhow, so here, I'm gonna, I am writing this proposal to address to safety issue and concerning two-two-five, two-thirty-five, two-forty-five, North Rancho Santa Fe Road, San Marcos, California, with the plan to bring said location into compliance with building code. I understand you're concerning regarding safety issue over said property. I will advise you that I am doing everything I can to resolve this issue and clear up and the safety concern you may have. In the background, the prior company that was, we hired a company, R and R, for the demolition, the three commercial building, and the two-two-five, two-thirty-five, two-forty-five, North Rancho Santa Fe Road. And they left retaining walls and doesn't meet the safety requirement for the city of San Marcos code, as well as being an ISO. The security guard left promises when the contract left, allowing for the potential and subsequent trespassing and graffiti. I had made several attempted to call concerning this issue with no response, and therefore the prior hired company never came back to finish the job per our agreement and signed the contract. Anyhow, it's not only my fault. I think city is a partial fault, because I give the permit to, I mean, sign the permit to, I mean, the sign the demolition, and the city give a permit to that. And the city has to finish the job to, when the sign off, city had, I think, my, whatever, my common sense is the city has to not let go, but they say they got right off, so I don't know what's going on. But anyhow, for the further, we're going to build the building, so I don't want to bring any dirt to pile it up and make, you know, you know, the dirt and the rain season slash, I don't want to create more problems. So we just let it go like this. I want to provide a guard and stay there twenty-four hours with the model home.
So I'm a little unsure, Mrs. Peak, of who could speak to Mrs. Park outside of the meeting?
We have been speaking with Mrs. Park fairly regularly, our office has, so we will continue to interact with Mrs. Park and her relatives, so.
Okay, so, Mrs. Park, just to let you know procedurally, we, when an item is not on our agenda, we're not, as a city council, allowed to respond, really, to your specific thoughts and comments. So I guess we've heard what you've had to say, we have listened, though I would implore you to please continue to work with our city attorney's office so that we could get a resolution on this property.
Okay, we're going to build the building soon. Okay, we're going to build the building soon.
Okay.
We're trying to plan that.
So, so, so.
We're looking for, we're looking for.
Sorry, Mrs. Park, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to cut you off. Though, we, we, you know, we have a public comment period, it's five minutes, we've given you your time. We, we can't take any action, and letting us know, I mean, we've already, we have our city attorney engaged in this, and we won't be able to have any decisions outside of you working with our city attorney's office, unfortunately.
Or city attorney's office, I have to contact them? But we, this is my property, we're going to safety, we're going to guard the safety also.
So, so I'm sorry, I'm sorry to also catch you off again.
I don't want to afford, you know, dirt to bring it in, bring it out. You know, 200 trucks, 800, 500 trucks.
So, Mrs. Park. Mrs. Park, my apologies, I, I'm sorry to catch you off. But if I, if I allow you to continue speaking, then I have to open up a comment period for every single person. And we, and we can't actually make any decision or any direction to our city staff. Our city attorney will be, her, her office will be reaching out to you continuously, but we really need you to work directly with our city attorney.
Mrs. Park, we are not going to negotiate a code enforcement action at this time.
We're going to build the building.
We understand what you had to say. Please, you've, you've finished your comments, we can discuss it later. This is, this is an oral communications period for five minutes.
Right.
The council cannot take action on this item. I cannot negotiate with you because we are in the midst of a, of a city council meeting.
Yes.
So we will talk with you later. But I'm telling you, we would, we have been very clear about your deadlines and the required activities. And you have not met any of those deadlines or performed the required activities in a timely fashion. I would direct your attention to the deadlines and the required activities and accomplish those in a timely fashion if you want to avoid the fines and the penalties. Otherwise, we will, we will.
This is not necessary thing for us.
Mrs. Park, we are not going to engage in negotiations at this time. That is the end of the matter.
Mrs. Park, we have, we have more meeting to, we've got, we've got to go into closed session. So my apologies, but we need you to work directly with Mrs. Peak's office.
Okay, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, let's see, reports. Sand Egg. It was a lot of fun on Friday. No, I'm kidding. Okay, so on Friday, the main topics that we were discussing, there were a lot of things. But the main topics that we were discussing were moving forward on a legislative platform. I didn't bring my agenda. But a legislative platform was one of the main topics that we were discussing. And also some things that our, our director had brought forward and we were discussing as well. So in our legislative platform, we took action to remove the efforts to support legislation that would change things for Sand Egg, but it would be moving forward, which we voted to remove, moving forward to eliminate the two-thirds majority of any ballot measure. Put on the ballot by a municipality from two-thirds to a simple majority. And then we also removed any, moving forward on any legislative fixes for the transponder technology, manage lanes, and any other of those road charges outside of an actual road charge. So any other fees to drive on local roads or also highway lanes that are currently general purpose lanes as having them converted. So we move forward on removing those two things from the legislative platform for just one year. And then last year, and I haven't, or last year, last week, I also sent a letter asking the board of directors to put an agenda item on, actually, the executive committee and the leadership, to put an agenda item on the agenda that would move forward in removing the road user charge and all accompanying fees for any driving in San Diego County. On a future agenda, I have not yet heard back from the board leadership on that. But that would be in the 2025 update, which, for the regional transportation plan, which would be the years that we would need to implement pilot projects and install the technology that actually could charge people to drive on local roads and then also highway lanes that are currently general purpose lanes. So I was able to get those out for one year only. And that letter that I have sent, have not heard back from that yet. And is there anything else that was significant that we could, that is? I'm trying to remember. Oh, and one other thing, I did, I did speak in pretty great detail about the youth opportunity passes. And the youth opportunity passes that have not been yet signed for the extension of that by North County Transit or MTS. There still needs to be some funding actually identified to pay for that. But currently through June of 2023 this year, all youth are able to use all transit within San Diego County for free. So whether you want to get to school, to work, to go down to the beach, however, that is all free for our youth 18 and under. Anything else?
Well, when you say significant, that's a relative term. Significant to me was pleasantly surprised that the chair of Sand Egg decided to leave me on the audit committee.
Oh, yes.
Which is a plus for a voice for our community.
Yes, and we, and we appreciate your service. Anything else? Okay, moving on to Lake of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We had the report from the last council meeting, we meet again at the end of this month. And that, I believe, is going to be a Zoom meeting, we're not meeting in person. Does that sound correct? Am I confusing my meetings? It's a Zoom meeting, yes, okay.
Okay, North County Transit District.
Let's see, oops. In our February meeting, we had a couple highlights. We had an update from the Rail Safety and Community Enhancement Committee, of which I'm on, there are, I think, four of us. And as I've mentioned in the past, there's a lot of federal money available. And so North County Transit is looking to partner with cities and its members to come up with projects to, hopefully, communities would partner together, like we could partner with Escondido and Vista on something. And so, and we have a city staff person on that also, Jack. And so at some point, there will be some projects come forward, and then the full board will decide on, on the projects. I'm hoping that that's like a point index system of some kind, there has to be some.
So what kind of projects?
So it could be quiet zones, grade separated highway and pathway rail crossings.
Oh, you have made it quiet zones.
Anything with quality of life projects. There's a variety of opportunities. So the city will kind of decide what project might they want to try to push forward and then partner with North County Transit. The goal is multiple cities would partner together on something, so.
Well, you know, the coast is getting the quiet zones, so why can't we get that inland?
Well, I think they'll be deciding, Jack will be deciding with staff as to what we might work on.
Nice.
So we had that update. April, we'll be having a service change. There's a minor reroute for Breeze 303 through Oceanside. We rerouted Breeze 347 through San Marcos, which you had an update on previously. Breeze 350 through Escondido will be restored to every 20 minutes. And so that'll all happen in, in April. And then we had an update on our Pronto fare system, which is a joint effort between NCTD and MTS to come up with a regional fare system where people can load their money onto the Pronto card or through an app. And so trying to make it easier for people to, to move around. They could still do cash and all of that.
I've used the app, and it's very convenient. You can pay for more than one person with your app. You simply identify more than one fare rider. If it's a one-way or a round trip or by a daily pass, it's pretty convenient.
Okay, good.
And I have to say, I don't know how it works, but I think Pronto is the same app that, that the youth is, through the youth opportunity passes are through, right?
Probably.
Yeah.
Because it's the new system.
They went away from the compass system to Pronto.
Yeah, right, yeah, Pronto is the new. And there's further enhancements coming down the road. But like with anything new, it just takes a while for those to come online.
Okay.
So, making good updates, that's it.
Okay, North County Dispatch, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. We did meet last week, we met February 22nd, it was my first meeting in attendance. And we really had two main items that really, as a board, that we voted on and we discussed. So the one item is that the, the agency continues to look for a future home. And I believe this is.
Wow, this has been going on forever.
Right.
For a later term.
Right. Yeah, it seems so. And they are looking at a possibility of the Oceanside Police Department is looking to build a new headquarters. So they were asking for the board to give direction for the agency to look at that as an option. So no decision's been made, it's to continue conversation with Oceanside. And then, of course, I think there's other considerations. For instance, building, a building in Rancho Santa Fe. But anyway, really, it seems like there's nothing definite.
That's been going on for 16, 16 years.
Okay, so it's still happening. The big item that we did get to vote on is we were asked to approve that the director negotiate financial terms with the city of Escondido to become a member agency. And I understand this is something that's been in the works for the last few years. So this was a big item, so we did approve that. So it seems to be that Escondido should be coming on board. They have the support, and so that will go to city council. It sounds like with the next couple of months, the city council should approve this. And then we should get an update at our next meeting in, in May.
That's a pretty big deal.
And that's what it sounds like. It sounds like it really is, and it sounds like all of the member cities and agencies will benefit from Escondido coming in, it'll lower the rate, so. So that seems to be big news.
Okay. All right, Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
We had our first community outreach meeting in San Marcos, and it was held at the Senior Center. That was on the 16th. We had a 10:00 AM and a 1:00 PM meeting. And we had about 20 or so at each one of those. Good questions. I want to commend Jennifer Kirschbaum, who's on our community support committee for the city of San Marcos for attending and helping us with that. We had a second event on the 22nd, and that was at San Marcos Elementary School. And we coordinated that during the local bi-weekly food bank drive. So it was horrible weather, very windy, rain. But through adjustments, just essentially got in line. So as people were coming in to get their, their food supplies, they were given an English or Spanish pamphlet with questions, contact information. And we're looking at conducting another event specifically at that location outside of school hours when we can have a better contact. Our board meeting was the following day, on the 23rd. We agreed to move the regular in-person board meetings, sorry, Jack, to the Oceanside City Council chambers as a, after all the discussions and negotiations to set up here. Oceanside City Council chambers, starting with the 20, March 2023 board meeting.
Free was just too expensive?
Say, what is Oceanside offering?
What is free?
I think it was more convenient for the majority of the board members.
Yeah, so not so much for Escondido, San Marcos, but when you start working your way down to Del Mar, I think it was an easier ride for them.
Got it.
I think we're a little more, a little more durable. We agreed as a board to further evaluate a joint program between a third-party vendor and Tesla to provide solar panels and a Tesla wall battery to our constituents. The Clean Energy Alliance will be the recipient of the energy provided, and the resident will continue to purchase the power from the CEA. Resident will benefit from using the power stored in the battery, and the CEA will receive credits for providing clean energy, and the vendor will take a share of the billing proceeds as their fee. Targeted customers will be those who are not financially able to purchase or lease a solar system, but will not be solely income-based. We will not initially be available to existing solar customers simply to install a battery, but that may be something down the road. Our next community outreach in San Marcos will be on the 28th at the Farmer's Market. And we will also have a stall at the Chambers Spring Event on Via Veracruz. Our next board meeting, March 30th in Oceanside.
Today at the Farmer's Market?
No, 28th, March 28th.
Well, you just said the 28th, today's the 28th. I was thinking February 28th, next month.
Good catch, March 28th.
Okay, all right.
I, I do want to add, Councilmember, I was at the Clean Energy Alliance Outreach Event at San Marcos Elementary last week. And not only was it freezing, but we got hail. So they are troopers.
Oh, my gosh.
By mutual agreement, I all four of them, a gift card for Tina's Deli for talking it up so much as a place to grab lunch. So we'll be providing those.
Nice. Okay, city council business visits.
Yes, Mayor Jones and I visited Levante Spa, which is on Nordal, and.
In the medical office?
Yes.
The new medical offices right there.
By center.
Yep, just, just.
They offer a very wide range of services, medical and day spa offerings. It's owned and operated by a couple. Jay is the president and CEO, and Ziba is the VP and head RN. Jay was originally, this is interesting, Jay was originally an engineer and worked in aerospace, and then joined his wife in the medical spa industry as her business grew. They outgrew their business in San Diego, I believe sold it, and relocated to San Marcos because they just felt it was the fastest-growing city in North County, and they wanted to be here. They opened in 2019 with about 5,000 square feet, did full custom improvements. And, oh, yes, you have some photos there.
No, I thought they didn't open until March 1st of 2019.
I'm sorry, they built out in 19.
Yeah, they built out.
And then they opened in March, and then COVID hit.
March 1st?
Yeah, and then COVID hit.
Oh, COVID hit, and then they had to close two weeks after they opened. And, you know, her story was, I, I really felt for her. She was like, yeah, I just sat here a few times and cried because it was so overwhelming how they had to close so, so quickly. Anyway, so in, in June 2021, they opened their medical part once restrictions permitted, and they opened the day spa offerings. They actually have a, I think it was four pedicure stations and four manicure stations that is not being used right now, which it, does it show it there? No, that's not it. Okay, that's, the middle part is the bridal spot. It was super beautiful in there, like amazing. Oh, yeah, on the right-hand side, there's the, the pedicure places. But anyway, so they have four pedicure, four manicure not being used yet because they didn't open that part of the business. And four hair cutting stations, which not being used yet. So, yes, exactly. So anyway, it's a beautiful place. We didn't get to see the couples spa area because it was being used. We didn't want to crash on them, of course. But anyway, it was, it's absolutely beautiful. If you go back to the picture where you first, oh, and this is the little kids' room. I guess I should get back to the notes. Did we even discuss that yet? Well, it's like the kids' club, they call it. And it's got, of course, a TV for the kids so that they can, you know, keep busy while their moms and, well, dads too, I guess, are being pampered. It's really beautiful when you walk in, though. And the tiered opening of their medical and day spas altered their original business model for their client attraction. So they always thought that it would be the day spa part, and then the medical part, and then that kind of flipped. The clients can purchase a. Uh, the clients can purchase a membership to enjoy discounted rates or purchase individual services. And the, um, they employ eighteen staff, including one doctor, one physician's assistant, and three registered nurses. They offer injectables, laser treatments, medical rejuvenation, facials, peels, massage, hair, nails, makeup, and bridal suite services. And it's a great addition to our city, and again, it's really beautiful. You can go back to the first picture, I think it was. Yes, you can. The, yeah, the entries to the far right, it really is beautiful. It's behind us. You can't really see how pretty it is, but it really is beautiful, and, and it does feel really nice and luxurious. And when you walk in, you can see the, the beautiful chandelier. It really is a very peaceful, um, location. And so, yes, the two of you, if you don't, uh, do, uh, day spa sort of things, your wives would definitely love, um, going to a place like this.
Do day spa?
I don't know. You guys don't look like it.
It sounds like you had an enjoyable visit. I can hear the excitement in your voice.
Well, I haven't been there yet, but, uh, two of our staff members that were with us, they both have enjoyed their services. And we're gushing about how amazing it was, so I'm just saying. Well, okay, well.
Which, which building is it off of Nordal?
It's in the, uh, the new medical building that's maybe about three years old.
Just north of the center.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's beautiful. It really is beautiful. And, and you, if you haven't been in the building, it is a beautiful building. My dentist moved there, um, about a year ago.
Is this the one that you're, I forget the name of the street, I shouldn't.
Used to be near that little, or it's near where that little, um, putt, putt-and-play was.
Yes.
Yeah, it's right next to that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, you know where it's at. It's, it's a beautiful, um, building, but their spa, I mean, they really took it the next level. It really is nice, yeah. Anyway, um, okay, uh, moving on to, well, can I even find my agenda because I literally have all this stuff all over my desk? Creek District. I keep driving by hoping, well, actually, you know what? You go ahead and talk, and then I'm gonna put my little blurb in to give staff some kudos on something.
Okay, we'll take them. Rain's not helping in terms of schedule, um, but, uh, we're trying to do our best to mitigate that, but it's having impacts across the project, as you might imagine. With respect to the bridge, all the utility conduits in, um, and we're hoping to pour the deck in mid-March. Um, there's lots of work going on with retaining walls and sound walls along Discovery, um, and lots of work going on regarding drainage facilities along Discovery, Joy Court, uh, and other utility work. So, um, it's, uh, it's a challenge right now, uh, to try and keep things going and with the way the weather's been, but otherwise, it's, uh, it's going well. And I'll take the kudos now, or I'll, we'll give Isaac the kudos now.
So, uh, last night I had gone to Amalfi for dinner, and I was driving through, and, you know, it was raining and everything, and I noticed that there were some bright lights on near the creek area, near, uh, Valley Bible, um, school. And then also, like, right in that area, and I could tell there was a truck out there. They were monitoring the water. So first time I've seen that. And as I went down Discovery, I looked, and it was happening all along, uh, Discovery, that they were monitoring the water and, uh, making sure that we weren't having any flooding issues. So I was really pleased to see that because, um, you know, you always worry about when we have a lot of water, what's gonna happen? What if, you know, the fence gets, you know, overwhelmed with water and, and things like that? And, you know, right there at the elementary school, so was very pleased to see that our contractor was out there doing a great job monitoring it all and making sure that they were being diligent, so, um, we appreciate that. So kudos to staff for, um, keeping on them and making sure that they're doing what we want them to do. Any other, um, discussion about?
Uh, yes, for Public Works, yesterday, in spite of the fact that we had rain this weekend, and again, we're at it for another day or so, I saw the crews out doing coal patching on some of the more significant, um, potholes without shutting down traffic and doing their very best to stay out of trouble. They weren't doing anything that was nearly unsafe, but, uh, getting the, the really annoying ones filled quickly as, as best they could, so it was really nice to see.
We're, we're in council commentary now with that comment, and I'm glad you brought that up because that gives us one more time to, uh, talk about report a concern. If you see a, if you see a, um, pothole, we definitely want you to take a picture of it. Let us know where it's located so that we can get out there and get it patched up quickly. Um, we definitely, our guys are working all the time, and we want to make sure that they're, uh, filling things quickly, um, so that we don't have issues. And, um, it's very easy to use. You go to our city website, sand-markos.net. You can punch in, uh, "report a concern" at the search engine, and it will take you right to the page. You click on it, but then if you have a smartphone, it's even easier. You go to, um, you just, uh, as, as you search for San Marcos app, and it will, um, just download it for you. It's got our little wave-finding sign as, uh, the logo, and, uh, you can just report everything right there as far as your potholes, street light that's out. Um, and it's very easy to use, and we want people to use it because it tracks it, and then it also gets back to you, uh, when, uh, that issue is cleared, which is really important. So any other commentary by the council? If not, we will be going into closed session. Uh, Mrs. Peak, could you please call us out to closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the city, city council will now adjourn to closed session to discuss items sixteen and seventeen, real property negotiations with the city manager, city attorney, and special counsel under Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-eight. Uh, first property is, uh, owned by the, uh, by Jay Elizabeth Santos, single woman, and Gloria P. Santos trustee or successor trustees for the, um, uh, GHS Living Trust. The assessor's parcel number two-two-one-one-ten-eighteen-oh-oh. Uh, the second property is owned by Jesus Santos and Juana I. Santos. Real property is identified as APN-two-two-one-one-ten-seventeen-oh-oh, and that's at seventeen, one-thirty-four, excuse me, Myrtle Avenue, San Marcos. Both parties represented by Bradford Coon of Nosman LLP.
Thank you, Mrs. Peak. We'll be back.
Yeah, you. And that's a good way for them to be with any pushes as well. We are a little around. Okay, they're on the way now. Now, I request that.
Oh, here, is that here?
Yeah. Well, uh, to look like out, so we have little screens so we can see who's coming, who's on back, kind of, you know, like, we don't get, we call off, you know?
It's an important position. It's a beautiful, yeah, it's beautiful.
There it is. Okay. I don't know. But. 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 I think. I don't. S. Seeing all the. Little bits. And these four hundred years ago. And. Oh, I. It's. It's disgusting. I drove through there and I was like. Yeah. Four months. Yeah. A third world country. Yeah, it's. 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 They're like apartment complexes. They made tarps along. Yeah. Whole. Collages. But our apartment. Our apartments. It's like. See. You see how he. I used to. Like, he's not. Get caught. Which is a nice fishing. Don't you take the berries. You know. Couple of them. Oh. Well. I would. Just tell. You know. It is. I would. Kind of. He's. Long. But first. Drive. Right. That's a whole. I'll. Be. I'm. I'm. I was like. Yeah. Who. You know. People. So. I'm. Yeah, it's scary. Rain. At the park. Like. Yeah, it's scary. I mean. It is. I would. Too. I would. I would. But I think. That. Now. They can make. And. They'll hold. Two. They're not. In. I. No. They should. They're not. It's really. It's really sad. Yeah. It's. Yeah, but. We're. I'm like. Yeah. I'm. Maybe. Is that the house? That's. Yeah, I remember. It's huge. Oh, yeah. It's home. And like. Yeah, we're. I'm. Yeah. We're. We're. I don't. Just. Stop. We're down with this conversation. But that's. I'm ready. Shut up. Yeah. Because I. I'm. I'm like. I don't. Now you're trying. Now you're trying. What's. I'm saying. For. I'm. I'm. Which is. Yes. That's. Well. She. Always. 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 Yeah. I care. For a while. Yeah. Yeah. Um. That's good. Yeah. Good. Yeah. Good. All right. I'm. I don't like. I don't know. I don't know. Even. Uh, I haven't said. We've been that long. But. They said I lost. You know. Yeah. It's. You know, is this, uh. Park. Well. This stuff. Uh. I don't. I don't. I don't. Yeah. There's. Uh. The. Park. Where. I only mentioned. I was mentioning. That. I. I just. Or. There's. Or. So. Or. Or. That's. Were they all. Then. Or down. All this. The. The brown building. Were they. Years. There. So. Did you. They got. So. Like. Like. I don't. I keep. Like. Stay. Working. Please. I'm. I'm. So. You said. What. You. Actually. We. We. Well. Are they. Did. They. They. Not. Having. A. Great. Time. The rest. The. How. It. And. Make. Um. And. We. What else. It's. Not. Really. No. No. Quite. Maybe. Yeah. Or. On. On. Who are trying to. The. Project. Tonight. Of. But. The. Project. Could. They. Probably. 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 There. There's. There's. There. Yeah. Would be. Kind of. I. Yeah. Yeah. And. Yeah. 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 Yeah, when she was taking her. Enter. Yeah. Yeah. There. She's. She's. The first. To. Be. So that was a future. Later. Off. Later. Well. Yeah. So. It's all. It's all. So. For everybody. That. We're. Yeah. Well, because she was like. Taking. She's. And. Yeah. She. Compliment. Her. Her. Seriously. Yeah. Yeah. But. Yes. We have. Down. And. She. Down. But. So. Yeah. Yeah. And. It's. Down. No. You're. Giving. Or. Yeah. Yeah. That's. You. See. Yeah. It's. Yeah. It's nice. I heard. She. Yeah. Something. The. One. I think there's. Three. Four. I hear. That's. Yeah, it looks like. I've. One. Two. There. Yeah. 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 And. You're. Yeah. 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 It's. Yeah. I said. Well, I guess. But. She. Spotted. Cause. Then he died. And. Had. She had very. Good. Thoughts. I tried to talk to her. Sometimes. With property. She had all. She was. She's. She's random. Like. Goes off on other subjects. Doesn't. Like. Yeah. Well. People. Fire. And. So. On. Yeah. 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 All right. Well. I'll be on the phone. See. You guys. Of course. I want to get one more. I need. I think. I can't. I'd like. Try to see. About that. Oh, okay. But they don't come back in here. Well, one or two. Will they come in here? We should all. About that. Okay. Uh. I guess. Why. Yeah. All right. Have a good one. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.